Order the sixth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Present.
Member Capola.
Present.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Gaitley.
Present.
Member Magnolia.
Present.
Member Peña.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
All, all, please rise for the salute to the flag and, uh...
Hi. Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and equal civil with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'd like to recognize our new student representative from facto leery, Molly Winchon?
Winchell.
Winchell, thank you.
Hello. Welcome.
Welcome, Molly. Welcome, Molly. All right, so first item on the agenda are the minutes.
I make a motion that we accept the personal subcommittee meeting on March 3rd, 2022, and also the second special meeting on March 3rd, 2022 with executive session minutes.
Seconds.
Roll call.
Are we doing the executive session minutes now?
No.
An executive session. I would do them in executive session.
Okay.
This is from the last meeting.
So just the A, just the A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's fine.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gaitley.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Peña.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is a school nurse election, and we have a candidate.
We do indeed. This evening seeking the committee's support for the election of Oneida Nunes in the position of nurse. With her election, all schools will be fully covered, leaving only floor float positions. So we're really excited about that.
The motion, yeah. Member Castellanos.
I just want to say thank you. I know I've been asking for the last couple of years about staffing, and I just think that's remarkable. I want to thank that whole operation and all the work that's been done from Deb and that whole, that whole, that whole operation. So, thank you. And I, sorry, apologize if I interrupt it.
I make a motion that, um, that the school nurse be Anita Nunes.
All right, roll call, please, and just a reminder to state the name of the candidate.
Member Castellanos.
Oneida Nunez.
Member Capola.
Oneida Nunez.
Member Dugan.
Oneida Nunez.
Member Gaitley.
Oneida Nunez.
Member Magnolia.
Oneida Nunez.
Member Peña.
Oneida Nunez.
Mayor Nicholson.
Oneida Nunez. All right, so we have a, some, some great groups here to join us for the donations, and I would entertain a motion to take those agenda items out of order to, before the presentations, if, if the committee is so willing.
So moved, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gaitley.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Peña.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
All right, so we'll start with the request to accept a donation of $2,500 from the Autism Patch Program of the Lynn Police Department to the Coach Program.
Yeah, again, seeking the committee's support to accept this wonderful donation sparked by an incredible initiative led by Lieutenant Wenzel and other officers to create the patch that I'm wearing, that you see them wearing, to bring awareness to autism. Autism Month is right, right before us. It starts in early April. And in a conversation with Lieutenant Wenzel, I mean, they've done incredible, incredible work. I'll actually invite him to, to come up and say a few words if he's okay to do so, talking about their fundraising efforts. The funds will go to support the Coach Program in Lynn, which is just wonderful. So we're thrilled about the donation, but I think more importantly about the values behind these patches.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for having us. I'll, I'll be brief here, but this is Officer McConville, Officer Kulikowski, and this is my son Marcus, who's my inspiration in everything. Marcus went through the Coach Program. He's a student at Classical now, and he's, he's attributed this success of, of why we did this in the first place. So, the, the patch program is a national program, so it's countrywide, it's statewide. Many departments do it, we never did. The last summer, I attended an event sponsored by the Flutie Foundation, which sponsors the Coach, the patches. And when I got back, we got together and we designed this patch, and then we marketed it throughout the department, sold the patch to charity, and we raised over $7,000. So, $2,500 we're donating tonight to the Coach Program, and we have $2,500 that we're donating to the Flutie Foundation, and then they've already got a head start on next year for a donation, and hopefully, we can keep this going year to year, because I think we can all agree what a great cause this is.
Yes, it is.
April is National Autism Month, and if nothing else, beyond the, the money and the recognition or the donation or whatever, everything that we do to raise awareness of autism, that's what it's all about. We appreciate it. Thank you for letting us come here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is a chat. I remember I could present it too, I'm rather glad to do it.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Could you guys make a photo?
Go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
We've got a photographer.
We gotta have the, oh, yeah, yeah.
You're probably the first person that showed up. John, can we trouble you to come get a picture of this as well?
So, uh...
There he is.
Face this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Adam, you want to come around?
Yeah.
Want to go, you want to, you guys want to go up there? Just be committed, or?
I don't need my face in any, any other thing. I don't need a photo.
So much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice work, guys.
When I was working in the room, I didn't make it over to say hi to you guys.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you. Long time.
Congrats.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
What is the, uh... Just want to... Yeah?
Yes.
Great. Thank you to Chief Reddy as well for being here and for, for all your support of the program. Thank you, Chief.
On camera.
What's the recommendation of the superintendent as to the...
Recommendation is to accept.
Great. Who will, committee?
Yes.
Motion?
Motion to accept the donation of $2,500 from the Autism Patch Program of the Lynn Police Department to the Coach Program.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gaitley.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Peña.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
And then the other donation is the Camp Rotary Proposal to Fund 54 Lynn Students to Camp Rotary for one week of summer camp, Lynn Kids to Camp. Welcome back, Dr. Cowdell. On up, yeah.
Following Larry's example, I'll be brief. Which we'll keep it that way. I just, you, most of you are familiar. Welcome to the new members of, and congratulations to the new members of the committee. I'm the director of Camp Rotary, which is an overnight camp up in Boxford, Massachusetts, and it's owned by the Lynn Rotary Club, started 100 years ago, and we're celebrating our 100th anniversary this year, as a matter of fact. And for the last eight or nine years, we have been focusing back on making sure that Lynn students are able to take advantage of the camp. It's starting to price out a lot of the Lynn kids. That cost is about $1,000 now to go for a week of overnight camp, which sounds expensive, but we're actually in kind of the, the lower end of the, the price range for overnight camps. But knowing that that still sometimes is cost prohibitive, we have, the Board of Directors has made it a point to make sure that Lynn kids are able to attend. So for the last eight or nine years, we've been donating weeks of camp to the school system in a partnership with the principals. So we give two weeks to each principal to give out to their students, and there are really no strings attached with it. They can, they can pick and choose, they can go by hardship, they can use it as kind of a, a reward for role model camp, uh, role model students that are just deserving of, of a treat or something. So, and it's an experience that they'll never forget for the rest of their life, for sure. Some, some members of the committee have had their, their sons or daughters attend as well. So, this year, we have 54 weeks of camp that we'd like to donate to the students in the city of Lynn.
Member Gaitley?
I just want to, I am, my son went there. It was a wonderful experience, and to read that 54 Lynn kids are going to have that opportunity to go for a whole week to Camp Rotary and learn where it's really like to live in a wooded community, to be cared for like they are, to be taught things that they would never learn in Lynn. I, I just am like thrilled that it went up to 54.
You're right. It's actually, 54 is what we donate to the school system, but then we also take, a lot of times, we help kids that apply directly that don't have the funds, or sometimes we'll work with DCF or something, so it's probably closer to about 80, 80 kids.
Well, thank you again for such a wonderful opportunity for our kids.
So recommendation of the superintendent?
Recommendation to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes, for the 54,000 gift.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gaitley.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Peña.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us back to presentations, and we have blended learning demonstration. Dr. Talwar.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Powers. You need the mic, though.
Thank you. Kareem Farah is the Chief Executive Officer and co-founder of the Modern Classrooms Project. As a math teacher in the Washington DC schools, Kareem and his co-founder developed the modern classroom model, a truly innovative approach to teaching and learning. LPS discovered Kareem in our search for ways to improve student engagement during the height of the pandemic. We are truly excited about our formal partnership that Kareem will now discuss in much more detail. Thank you, Kareem.
Thank you. Let me make sure this clicker works. Well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for having me here. It's an absolute honor, and honestly, I just spent an hour with some of the amazing teachers behind me that have been doing this incredible work at Lynn. So this is really about highlighting their work at a time when it's probably incredibly difficult to think about innovation and, and just how stressed the systems have been nationwide, to think that Lynn dove into innovation and to think differently about instruction to figure out how to solve some of the challenges was just inspiring. So, thank you for the wonderful introduction. We founded the organization years ago, and we work nationwide with schools and districts. It was sort of extraordinary when we partnered with Lynn, and we were extremely excited about that partnership, and it was about a year ago when this all started, and didn't necessarily know what was gonna happen, how many teachers were gonna be involved in this, how innovative things were gonna be, but it was just outstanding to see how excited the community was and particularly educators were, to start thinking a little bit differently about instruction and be innovative at a time when students needed it. So what I'm gonna do today is I'm gonna share just a little bit about the model, just so everyone's clear on what it is that we do as an organization. We're nonprofit, and then really dig into what happened here in Lynn, and just share a little bit about what the educators did, what they said about the program, and then at the end, we're gonna close with a little bit of a video from some students in a Lynn classroom, just who's experienced the model. So, just a little bit of background, I'm gonna turn back just so I make sure I'm like aligned on my slide. So a little bit of background on the model itself. So, I built this approach when I was a teacher in DC public schools. I was a teacher teaching students experiencing chronic absenteeism. I had multiple different grade levels in the classroom, lots of students experiencing trauma, and the reality is, when I stood at the front of the room and tried to lecture at a group of kids, most of my students' needs weren't met. That was just the reality of the game. And I didn't know what to do about it, right? So I was teaching every single day and wondering, how do I find the time to actually support students in the ways that they deserve to be supported? And am I using my time particularly effectively at the front of the room? When I tried to think differently about instruction, I realized there weren't very many opportunities for me to do that, so I decided to think differently just within the four walls of my classroom. So I created this model in my classroom years ago to just start to think differently. And what you'll see in the diagram above is just what, what it was like to be a teacher who was trying to support a high diversity of learning levels. So when you stand at the front of the room as an educator, you oftentimes feel like a failure. You're doing everything you can to plan and support students, but the reality is, your on-grade level presence students are oftentimes feeling bored. Your absent students are saying, "I have no idea how to catch up. I missed multiple days of class. I don't know what to do next." And your students who are below proficient might be saying, "Hey, I need more small group, one-on-one time. I need help." And I didn't feel like I could do that. So realizing that there was an opportunity to kind of think differently about teaching and learning, that's what we did. So the way that our model works, it's, it's a three-part model, blended self-paced mastery based, so that's why the title of this presentation is Blended Learning. And the whole design here is to just think about how a classroom can be reorganized to support students' needs more effectively and ultimately unleash teacher time to spend more time with kids one-on-one and in small groups. So the first phase of the model is the blended instruction component. So the idea here is, we want teachers to spend less time lecturing and more time working intimately with kids one-on-one and in small groups. So what all these educators behind me and over 100 did across the, the district is start to build instructional videos with their own voice and their own faces on the screen to say, "Hey, instead of spending time lecturing, how about I create videos that my kids can access anytime, anywhere, so I can actually spend all of class time working with kids?" And that's what they started to do. And this really created a space where, as oftentimes many of our teachers say, it ensures that it really allows students to have the best of the educator. They get to spend all of class time building relationships and also remediating and revising work and kind of moving across a continuum of mastery. So that's kind of phase one of our model, is this idea of thinking differently about instruction, building instructional videos. And I want to say, by the way, this is an opt-in-only model, which is something that was really an impressive decision by everyone in Lynn, was to say, "Look, teachers only do this if they want to do this," right? So the opportunity was available to educators, they could raise their hand and say, "Yes, I want to do this innovation," or not, which is an important thing to know, and I'll share a little bit more about how many educators dove into this work. Phase two of the model is, let me move ahead here. Phase two of the model is self-paced instruction. Now, this is a piece of the model that felt extremely important to me. I think everyone here knows that humans don't learn things at the exact same pace as their peers. That goes for babies, that goes for adults, that goes for me every single day when I'm trying to figure out how to cook a meal for my fiancee. So it's obviously incredibly difficult, right, to think about this idea that we're gonna make every kid learn every skill at the exact same pace as their peers all the time. So the second phase of this model is, if we've created videos for kids to access, well, now we can let kids be at different spots. Some kids can be working on lesson two, some kids can be working on lesson three, some kids can be working on lesson four, and kids are actually working on content that's appropriately challenging for their needs. So that's kind of phase two of the model, is a self-paced structure. Now, this is with guardrails. It's self-paced within each unit of study. So a couple of weeks at a time, right, kids are self-pacing, and these teachers are all classifying their lessons. What are those skills that are non-negotiable? What are the skills we want them to master? What are those must-dos? And then what are those aspire-to-do lessons? Those extension lessons that push thinking. So that's phase two of the model. Then, the final phase of the model is mastery-based grading. This is a deeply important thing to me because it's, it's honestly our responsibility to make sure that when students leave classrooms, they actually have understood the skills that we have laid out for them. And too often, when we teach in sort of a traditional format, kids are listening to lessons. They might be partially interning and internalizing information, but we're not actually holding them to mastery. We're not actually determining whether kids have truly understood the skills before they move on to the next. So in our, our model, every educator builds mastery checks, these bite-sized assessments at the end of each lesson, designed to really measure mastery. And then they build the systems for revision, reassessment, reflection, so this idea that kids are constantly revising their work and moving towards mastery over time. So that's the model that we've created. Now, I want to talk just briefly about our research nationwide, so I think we can speak a little bit to why the instructional leaders in the district actually wanted to move forward with this model. So, you'll see here on this slide, I kind of just isolate the control study that we did with Johns Hopkins University of Education to really speak to why folks created, why, why folks adopt this model at scale nationwide. And you'll see the two big data points that I highlighted here are, first, the capacity to help students catch up. We know the pandemic created challenges. We know that some kids struggled to stay on pace with academic content and fell behind. I also know some kids did just fine, right? So the reality is, we really need to create learning environments where teachers feel like they can help students catch up. And that's that first data point you see here, where modern classroom educators just really feel that ability to do that. The second data point is the most important data point to me at the organization, which is this idea that we need to create the space for teachers to actually work one-on-one and in small groups with kids. When you realize that teaching is all about building relationships, you need to provide teachers the capacity to do that, to build those relationships and also support students, and that's kind of that far-left data point. The last thing I want to share is, I think we all know that this has been a challenging year for educators across the country. This has been a challenging year for leaders across the country, and we want to be able to give instructional approaches that empower educators to feel like they can be successful in the classroom, to feel like the job is actually sustainable, to feel energized about the profession. And this is something we're seeing at Lynn at scale, which has been so inspiring to see. I've been into some of these classrooms, talked to the educators, and this is also what the data tells us, which is that educators in our classrooms just feel like they enjoy teaching more and they find the job more sustainable, so that's a key element as well. So I'm gonna jump ahead to our collaboration with Lynn. So I was contacted by folks here at Lynn to say, "Hey, we want to dive into some of this innovative work. You know, we're facing a challenging time, and it's time to think differently about instruction." So what happened was, we've now enrolled over 100 educators in Lynn public schools into our virtual mentorship program, our training program. That's 100 educators during one of the most challenging times our education system has ever seen, saying, "I want to be innovative. I want to take the leap into innovation." So just that number alone is just incredibly powerful and impressive, and I have told all the instructional leaders here and the educators, that number's much larger than a lot of districts presented to us, because the place was innovative. People wanted to think differently. So what I'm now gonna talk through is just a little bit about what these educators shared about the program, what they're seeing in their classrooms, some of the artifacts, and then we'll, we'll end with the video. So during this program, educators were enrolled in the virtual mentorship program, they were paired with other educators across the country, and they learned how to build this model out. They learned how to build instructional videos. They learned how to build self-pacing plans. They learned how to be mastery-based grading educators. And they completed 25 to 30 hours of professional development on their own time. Again, I just want to stress that. They completed 25 to 30 hours of professional development that they, they opted into themselves on their own time to think differently about instruction. Many of them, in fact, I just spoke to an educator now, who did that all in one week because they were so fired up to just kind of tackle this content and think differently about instruction. So this is the program that they went through. These are the results from Lynn educators. So we surveyed these educators to make sure both pre and post, like what happened in your learning experience? Well, first of all, nine out of 10 overall rating, 93% of these educators recommended the program to others, and then you see these really big shifts in their practices, actually learning how to do things differently in the classroom, which was incredibly exciting to see. But frankly, what I think is way more important is what they actually had to say. Now, this might be hard to see from here, but I know everyone has the slides in front of them. So what you're gonna see here is educators during an incredibly challenging time, talking about how their practice is shifting radically. You're hearing folks say, "This is one of the most powerful transitions in their career." You're hearing folks say, "It helps move their practice forward and encourages, encourage all teachers to participate." You're hearing folks say that they can finally differentiate the kids' needs. You're hearing folks say that it will help you grow as an educator, it's well-organized and is designed to really support them to build equitable classrooms. So educators are really speaking up about how powerful this work was, and it was, again, incredibly exciting to see at a time where morale was really low nationwide, which I think was incredible. These are some artifacts. I'm not gonna spend a ton, a ton of time going through these, but you should definitely check them out. These are just examples of what educators created. I mean, this is Afton Dean's awesome instructional video. You'll see her little, her face up in the corner there. I mean, these are educators spending tons of time planning and innovating to create instructional environments that are powerful. This is Sarah's ridiculous, or Jessica's ridiculous. I did that to you once in the classroom, too. This is Jessica's incredible game board. Sarah's also has an incredible game board. So you can see kids walk into these classrooms, and they get to navigate this incredible game board where they're kind of going through a self-paced learning environment that's fun, that's engaging, that's exciting. Again, building these kind of tools and resources on their own and innovating at a time that's really, really challenging. And then finally, holding students to mastery. This is Kristen's awesome mastery checks. These are the, the bite-sized assessments at the end of each lesson, so if a kid's actually learning a skill, there's a way to stop them and ensure that they've actually mastered that skill before moving on to the next lesson. The last thing I want to say, this is really cool, and this has moved very fast at Lynn. We have a credentialing process to elevate teacher leaders. It's an extremely important process to us, that the folks that we train have the opportunity to then be teacher leaders and can share their practice across the board. So we have two credentials. We have a distinguished modern classroom educator credential and then a mentor credential. And very quickly, we have already developed three mentors and seven distinguished modern classroom educators in just one year alone, which is an extremely fast acceleration of this process. I have highlighted two, and I'm gonna say your name correctly. Sarah is at the top there, and Jessica, both classrooms I walked into and was just like blown away, two of our mentors. We have another mentor already in the system and seven distinguished modern classroom educators. Pretty amazing to see this level of innovation and this level of teacher leadership at this pace, which is extremely exciting, and I can share, as of today, there's another 100 educators who've elected to be a part of our summer training program. So the buzz and excitement has not stopped, it continues to grow. So that's the Modern Classrooms Project. That's the update I wanted to share with everyone, and I just wanted to share how impressive it is to be able to work with Lynn. We do have a video to play, which did bring tears to my eyes, I have to say, just to see a group of kids actually share the impact. So I'm gonna let it go.
The way it's set up and where the class is ready. Everything is so organized. Advanced features are basically when you can take like up for the stats you wear. You added like an extra event, put stuff in the PowerPoint, and I got to do like a little video. I like that a lot. Projects here, you know, to be on, which is really great, so, and I just feel like that, and it's just different.
The cat is teaching the class, and all I want to say is that she's a
With the class, teaching the class, and all I want to say is that she's a great teacher. Oh.
I'm not going to add anything else, I'm happy to answer any questions about this work, the model, but I think that video speaks for itself when you can hear students engaging.
Yeah, remember Castellanos, remember Dugan?
Kareem, thank you so much for your presentation, very adept. Were you going to say so?
I don't know, I'm done.
Are you getting ready for, it's not a debate, that's where, I'm not going to, it's all compliments, I'm very grateful to learn from you and to have you here tonight to present. I just actually, could I actually, Sarah, I don't mean to put you guys on the spot, could you guys come up and share? I see the quotes, and I see it, like, you know, I see that you're ecstatic and, you know, all that, I would love to just hear some perspective.
Yeah, sure.
I bet, sorry to put you on the spot, but.
What would you like to know?
Yes. Talk about your experiences with this, how it impacted you, some of the takeaways, ways that we can learn from you to support, if we, you know, we're here to learn and grow together and to support our students, just like you, so.
So Jess and I both started when Michael kind of shared Modern Classroom Project with us last January, December-ish, that our online learning just wasn't really working, especially for math, because kids were in and out, internet was all over the place, kids were in different countries at the time, it was, it was a lot. And kids, they just weren't getting the consistent math instruction that they needed. So we decided, you know what, we heard about this thing, we took the free course that they offer, we're just going to jump right in and get started. And we really haven't looked back since, we've just been continuing the whole time and progressing in our units, I think, at least, they've been getting better and better as we go. Last summer, we both took the summer institute with the Modern Classroom Project, so that's like the PD 30-ish hours that Kareem was talking about. And that definitely helped, they pair you with a mentor, so that way, I mean, the two of us were working together the whole time, being thought partners, but with someone that's been using this model to teach, it was definitely, we gained a lot of insight from that.
I guess, I guess just as a teacher, after going through this whole pandemic with our class and feeling like, how can I meet the needs of my students when there's so many different needs in my classroom, right? Like, how can I do that? And seeing this model was like a chance that I could finally figure that out. So stepping into the model was definitely very overwhelming, and it was a lot of work at first, but the response that we've seen from our students, the independence, that my third graders come in and they know where they are and they, I have all this time to work with them and actually give them like true support. It's been really kind of revolutionary for my own personal teaching career, like, now it makes me want to stay in the classroom longer, like, I just, I'm thinking about all the different ways that I can do it further in my education, my classroom. It's, it's really kind of transformed both of our teaching and really made us more excited about the things that we're doing for the kids in our class.
Yeah, just from some of the diagnostics that we've given throughout the year, I mean, in my class in particular, I have students who are on a kindergarten math level, and I have some students who are on a seventh grade math level. And so using this, the ones who are on level or above, they're able to go through, they learn our new unit, and then I can even push them to the sixth grade standards or for them to do more application, projects, problems. And then the students that need more of my time, my support, I can dial it back for them a bit. So like Jess said, we're meeting our students where they need to be met, as opposed to standing in front of the class.
Expecting them to meet us, yeah. Expecting them to meet us in front of the class and when I'm doing my lesson, you know? Expecting that all 20 kids in front of me, 25 kids are going to be engaged and ready. And if they're not there, I'll give you a quick five-minute just the next day, but now they're truly, if they're missing it, they're truly have that opportunity to revisit it at any time, which is something that as adult learners, I think everybody sitting in this room likes to go back and reread something or re-watch something. Now we're giving our students that chance. And now I'll never look back, because, you know, how can we expect our students to hear it once and then remember it forever?
Yes.
To master it. So I feel like now we're actually meeting our students' needs.
Could I just say, wow? Yeah, Kareem, this is why I asked him to come up, that's a perspective that I envisioned, the passion. The pandemic put a toll on us, you know, our staff, students, families, it's impacted us. And to sit here and to see, I have that passion too, for our kids. And what you, what you, what you just stated is remarkable, and to see you inspired, stay inspired for our kids, and we're grateful to have you.
They deserve it.
Thank you.
They deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have to ask you a question.
I had a, sorry. So, remember Gailey, did you, you had, yeah, yeah, so I had member Dugan and then member Pena.
Oh, sorry. No, no problem.
You're right, thank you.
Oh, well, so thank you, I mean, the passion that you, I mean, it's all over you right now, so appreciate it. And, you know, just echo what member Castellanos said, it's just wonderful to see. I wonder if you guys could talk a little bit about, and again, not to put you on the spot, but you guys are here, I was going to have some other questions of Kareem, but just talk about maybe the benefit of working in small groups, and you talked about mastery checks, and what some of those might be that you do. I know exit tickets you mentioned, so things like, what do you, what are some of the things you might do? And also, what are the benefits of working with small groups with kids?
Yep, so part of the three pillars of Modern Classroom Project is the self-pacing. And so students will watch the lesson, we have guided notes that go along with the lesson, so the videos are pausing, and the nearpod questions that are coming up, they're filling out their notes at the same time. After that, they have an activity they can work on, and then there's a mastery check. A mastery check, two-to-five question quiz, that's at least how we do it. And that's the way that they prove that they learned this material. If a student needs extra help with the activity, they can talk to another student who, like the video said, are on their lesson, they can work together. Or if they get stuck, they can talk to someone ahead of their lesson. Or, because we're not just standing in front of the classroom and talking the whole time anymore, we have a lot more time to meet with our students, so they can meet with us as well. And then the mastery check is their time to really prove that they learned, that they learned this. So kind of the typical way of teaching before was that we would learn something, and when I thought that I taught it well, I was like, you know what, we're good, we're moving on. This way, each student gets to decide that for themselves. And when they prove that they learned it, that's when they can move on.
Right, 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 thank you. And then being a third-grade teacher myself, I must be, I know the challenges, trust me. I had a challenging day today, so I do know the challenges. But thank you. And then my next question would be for Kareem or Mrs. Powers. So obviously, this is, you know, elementary teachers, you're both third grade, both of you?
We're both fifth.
Third and fifth, okay. And then I saw in the video Marshall Middle School, is there anything toward the high school, or is this just sort of elementary, middle?
No.
Yeah, okay.
We can grab another chair. I taught 12 graders when I built them up.
Okay, okay.
So it's K to 12, there's educators across the district. These two jumped on.
Yeah, we can tell.
I think anyone I had ever seen. And I had the privilege of watching both classrooms, and they're absolutely outrageous, so I can watch them in action. But yeah, this is a K to 12 model. You know, I think actually at the elementary level, sometimes it's a little bit easier to change student mindset, because they haven't been learning in a traditional system for a long time. But then obviously at the secondary level, students are older, they can, they can be a little bit more self-directed at times. And so there's challenges kind of shifting practice in all environments, but it kind of thrives as long as the educator's fired up about it and wants to create the space for it. So it's going to be district-wide, very.
Afton Dean is a high school teacher.
Oh, okay.
Also a theater teacher, a drama teacher at classical.
I'm honored, I'm agreed.
Oh, sorry, agreed. But we've got a bunch of.
A whole cluster of science teachers at the classical could get together as a team.
Yeah. So it is a cross.
Great, great, all right, awesome, thank you so much, thank you, and keep up the great work, it's awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think member Gailey has something for you, too.
Member Pena and member Gailey.
Well, I want to say thank you for the presentation, and as a parent of children in the schools, I understand how hard it was, especially during the pandemic, and remote learning kind of brought some different challenges to us, especially to parents, and I can imagine how hard it was for parents of a different language. So I had a question, you had 100 teachers enrolled, right, participate?
Yeah.
And do you know if there were any bilingual or ESL teachers involved in the process?
Absolutely.
Because it would be, you know, it'd be fundamental, especially, you know, communication.
I mean, I can tell you, for me, the reason I built the model was when I was teaching Algebra II, I had a student with a language barrier, and I had no plan. I had no capacity to provide that student with enough time. And when I lectured, right, if I moved too fast, the kid didn't feel comfortable enough to raise their hand and say, hey, can you stop everyone so I can learn this skill? So it's extremely effective with emerging bilingual students. There's a lot of educators who leverage it in that setting. In fact, I just heard of a teacher today talk about how in particular it's had a profound impact on the students with language barriers, just because the one-on-one and small-group time, obviously, the capacity to stop and pause and rewind, it's something that simple. And then I'd add, the third piece is, a lot of times, right, the way you support students with special needs or emerging bilingual students is you have support staff come in, obviously, and it's much easier to create a learning environment with support staff when there's not a teacher at the front of the room lecturing, right? Because if you've been sometimes in a co-teaching environment, sometimes it can be a little hard to think about, like, what does the co-teacher do, what do I do, what am I doing when they're lecturing? When I was in both of your classes, I think.
We have the same inclusion teacher.
You have the same inclusion teacher. So I'm walking in there, you wouldn't know the difference between the lead teacher and the inclusion teacher.
Yes.
Right? Because they're both working in small groups the whole time, supporting students. So it works really well there, and we have mentors in that space, and I am going to plug our podcast, because we have an awesome podcast for emerging bilingual educators.
So that was kind of, you know, second part of the question with the parents and support, support staff, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate your work, thank you so much.
Remember Gailey?
I really love this, but I just had to ask this question of teachers. A lot of teachers that I talk to, or they call me, it's, it's very difficult to get the videos going, they feel overwhelmed. And so that's why I would make a recommendation that we have one or two mentors in a building to be actually there to support our teachers. But I'd like to know about your grading. Like, I did something similar when I taught at St. Mary's, I was teaching Introduction to Engineering Design, and when we got to the CAD drawings, everybody was all over the place. So I would just use a YouTube video of what I was doing, and it was like a two-week program, and they had to check in, and then I could run around and help them. So I understand that, and I would always give them hundreds, because it was like they mastered it. And they all loved me because I'm giving out hundreds, and they thought I was awesome. But it was basically giving you a venue, so that you can go back and check it, and then you can build the part that you need to build, you can make the cut, if you're doing something wrong, I'm there to help you. So I just want to know about your grading, because I thought it was too soft, but they were all like doing so well. I just was like, okay, I'll just give it to them, I don't know what else to do.
So I will say, it is a lot of work, and so I do agree with the teachers, you know, we need a lot of support, and that's what I think all of the teachers around the district who have piloted it are welcome, like welcoming teachers to email, call, come into our classrooms, you know, because we learn best from each other. So we really need to rely on each other to make this transition, which is what Sarah and I did, and with people from the Modern Classroom Project. The grading, we, I check the mastery checks as like pass or not pass. And then they also earn grades on their end-of-unit assessments that go along with the units. So I can look at my data and see, okay, so I have like a little tracker and I have codes. So if a student had to revise, I have a code for revise, so I can look back. And then when they take the end-of-unit assessment, see how they did, and I can look back in the unit and say, okay, well, this student did have to revise this lesson, this lesson, this lesson, and this lesson. So I see why maybe they got a lower grade, so what can I do now to support that student, to give that student opportunities to get their grade up? Because again, this is a revision process, this is something that we want them to be able to work on, work towards mastery, because it's not just going to come for everyone. So it's a work in progress, right? So the assessment, the end-of-unit assessment really goes along with that. And then like little built-in assessments that I would do throughout the year, but this is just how I would run my daily lessons that I used to teach in front of the class. And, you know, I wouldn't necessarily grade the exit tickets either, you would take them, you use them for a formative assessment, which is kind of how I use the mastery checks, you know? If I see that a few students are making the same mistake, I make a note, and I say, all right, come on, we're going to sit together, we're going to work on this, and then I give them a new version of the mastery check, so that then they can prove that they actually did master it. And if not, then we go back and we revise more.
And I think it's one of those things, too, that it depends on the classroom, it depends on the content, depends on the grade, depends on the teacher. But once you're in the Modern Classroom community, you can, community, you can post something on their Facebook, or you can reach out to some of the mentors, and you're going to get.
There's a lot of support.
Answers that could work within the model.
There's a lot of support. And I would say to teachers across the city, you know, there are, and we learned this from, Toni Rose gave me this quote, she's like, there's a few wrong ways to do the model, but there are so many different right ways. So dip your toe in, you know, try it, rip the Band-Aid, try a little portion of it, it doesn't have to be perfect, you know?
And we actively don't prescribe a grading policy.
Okay.
Because every community and every system is different, right? So teachers are a combination of their personality, a diverse group of students and ecosystem, and we trust educators to kind of build the grading policies they think are most appropriate for their kids. So we give the framework, but it's amazing how diverse the policies are nationwide and globally, and that's by design. Like, I would rather these two design the grading policies for these kids than me sit in my office and go, you know, Jessica and Sarah need to grade this way in Lin, that makes no sense. So yeah, that's, it's one of our favorite parts of the model, and it works quite well.
And I watched your video when they first brought it, it was a good video, I liked what I saw, so I wanted to thank you for coming here. And one other question, did they, have you seen improvements in student learning?
Yes, yes, much. And not only just grade-wise, independence-wise, confidence-wise, and so that's been probably one of the most rewarding parts.
Collaboration as well.
Community, classroom community.
It's not telling students, like, okay, go ask a friend, it's like they're learning how to use the classroom to their benefit and use each other to their benefit.
Which is what they need when they're working in a job, you know, you work with your colleagues, you know, that's, that's what you do, so.
Thank you.
Uh, member Magnolia?
This is sort of a, I don't know if it's a quick question or it's a giant question, so I'm going to ask it and you can decide. Does this model allow for a multiple-measured assessment that would be able to take, say, students with learning differences who might need to demonstrate learning in a different way, and make them feel much more like they're doing the same thing as other students in the classroom are? Because I can see how this would allow for multiple-measures assessment in a way that a traditional classroom model would not. And, and I say this because I just had a half-an-hour-long conversation with my daughter's teacher today about how she is top in the class in math when they talk, and she gets 79 on tests. And so they did like a, like a Jeopardy! with math, and she won, and she gets 79 on tests. So clearly, that, that method of testing, right, is just not getting at what she actually knows. So I'm thinking about these multiple measures and this specific model, and students who might find themselves in that position. So if you've found that, could you talk a little bit about it, please?
Yeah, no, well, I was saying, we were talking about upstairs, we were talking about reteaching and what happens when a student doesn't get a video, and do you just have them re-watch that same video? And I will, I'll say, first of all, like, think about when you watch your favorite movie, you learn a lot more the second time than you did the first time, right? So go re-watch my short video. Some kids, that's not enough for them, right? So some kids need maybe another video that can supplement my video with another teacher that's demonstrating it in a different way. Some kids might want to use manipulatives. So for a kid who really gets it, they may be able to watch my video and see it and be like, okay, great, done. But another kid really might need me to sit there and actually do what I'm doing on the video with him, and, and help him as he's doing that. And so I think that's where we use kind of our discretion to say, what are the ways I want this child to be able to demonstrate mastery to me, right? So if this, this mastery check may not, maybe this isn't the best way for this student So if this, this mastery check may not, maybe this isn't the best way for this student to demonstrate their mastery. How else can I do it? So I might ask them those questions, and if they can explain to me orally how they would get there, I'll say, okay, great, you know? They can explain it. Many different ways. Draw a picture of it. Lots of different ways that they can, you know? Also, when I have my teacher checklist, right? And I see, okay, so like someone like your daughter, she got them all right, but she did really poorly on the test. So then I would sit with her and say, what happened? You know, like, let's look at the assessment. You did this in this lesson. You were great. Like, where was the disconnect? And try and sit with her and revise and work together and reassess.
And we just try to focus on the learning as well because obviously our assessments are standardized even just across the district. They're the standardized paper tests that the students are taking or online now. And so same thing with Jess. I have my teacher checklist and I always tell the students, like, we're focusing on the learning and like, look at this. You mastered every single lesson in this unit. You got a 79, but you learned that material. So when you go to, I was fifth grade, so I was threatened middle, not threatened middle school, but. You go to middle school, your teacher is going to be so impressed because you know how to do this already. So even if you didn't get the best grade on the test, like, you still learned how to do it. Those problems were just tricky for you. So it definitely, and because in the class, there's a lot more going on. We're not all sitting there doing the same worksheet as I'm up at the board going over the problem. There's a lot more happening. Our inclusion teacher has, because we share an included teacher. She has a table that she sits at one spot that the students can go to her, they can come to me.
And all students, you know? She might be like, I'm working on lesson three. If anybody needs help with lesson three, come on over, you know? So everybody's benefiting.
It's a much more inclusion model as opposed to her just pulling students on IEPs to the back of the room. That's not necessarily inclusion.
Right.
So this is.
And they may not need that support all the time, right? So let them, let them fly if they can.
And I'll just, I mean, it is a big question, given a small one. So the small answer is yes. The bigger, the bigger answer is we also have a collaboration with Digital Promise, which has the Learner Variability Project, which is actually probably the most robust bank of resources to sort of think about the variances in learners and then create strategies. Actually, when you're in the course, and you all probably joined it too early to even have access to this, but now we map it to the Learner Variability Project. So when you have a student, for example, who struggles with executive functioning, what are the things you can bake into the structure and system to do that? And then today, kind of the perennial foundation for this is the Oak Foundation that focuses on learning differences. We plan to make a batch of extension courses that's really designed to even push that further. Because you can say it, right? I can say, every teacher can think differently about assessment. And you can provide an auditory avenue, a written avenue. But then providing the frameworks and structures to actually do it at scale is a whole other ballgame. So it is totally a part of our model and educators make it happen all the time. Taking it to the next level requires potentially some shifts in assessments, but also even more guidance and structure on how to pull it off. But it's core to what we do. I think it's critical.
And it's universal design.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Remember, Paul?
You guys have like this perfect partnership together. And, you know, in the staff survey, a lot of people talked about this program and were resistant a little, you know? But I think if it suggested that they find a partner and work the way you two work together, I think, you know, it could work for a lot more teachers along the way.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But. One of the other things in the staff survey is the PERS. Is the, are the PERS included on the training on this? No, I know they don't, but, you know, PERS.
No, PERS to, for the most part, to not take the blended learning PD.
Okay, only because, you know, they mentioned how they're not including a lot of the trainings and the staff development. And we are using them to fill in for teachers, you know? They're, they're stepping up and, you know, substituting and taking over classrooms. So I think, you know, it's something we should think about opening up to our PERS. You know, because they could, they could, some, you could be out and some parent could come in and cover your classroom and not have a clue.
So actually, the beauty of this.
I know, that's the best part.
Someone can come in and cover my classroom and because the unit's done, it's all there.
The learning never stops.
Yes, someone should have some knowledge of it.
Yeah, yeah.
But the videos are all there. All of my activities are in their bins. The students know where to go. All of that stuff is there. Not saying that they shouldn't have training, but that is the beauty of it, that a substitute can just walk right in and it's, it's all done.
In the survey, they, they've asked for these things. So, you know, we should, we should listen to them, you know? Thank you. Great job.
On the resistance piece, like, it's part of why it's opt-in by design. And I think a lot of teachers, rightfully so, are going to be resistant to things being forced on them. And what I would just say is I think a big goal in any district we're in is to elevate these folks' voices. Because me saying, hey, more teachers should do this, or anyone here saying more teachers should do this is nowhere near as powerful as what we're hearing here from teachers, right? So part of year two and year three in partnership with us is actually about getting these voices to be as loud as possible about the impacts in the classroom. Because they'll be able to convince their colleagues, their teaching teams, right? That this is a powerful way to think differently about instruction as opposed to me saying, I swear it's good.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to the teachers that joined us this evening to share your experience and for your leadership on this. And thank you to all the teachers who've put in all the hard work to figure this out. I am blown away by your ambition to deliver learning to your students and to be on the cutting edge of figuring out how to do that effectively. So thank you so much for all your work on that. And then thank you to the Modern Classroom Project for your support. What a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is a presentation on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So I'd like Capital Strategic Solutions to join us. We can just take a, we can just take a quick break for a minute. Yeah.
Do you remember me?
I remember you, school, schools, and schools.
And I had a nice conversation with your husband.
He's in the parking lot.
Oh, my gosh!
But your husband wasn't the last meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
My, my, my son has basketball down the street, so.
Oh, okay, so.
Two for one here.
Convenience then. This is the government way, hurry and wait.
All right, I think we can get started. So we wanted to provide an update on the, what the city is doing around ARPA funds. As you all know, we've been having a series of meetings in, community meetings in the different wards and with different community groups to try to get people's feedback. And some of you have attended those meetings, so thank you so much. We also, I know that we've got, we had some questions earlier on in the, in the year about ARPA funds. And so we thought it would be useful to invite Capital Strategic Solutions to share an update about where we are in the process. The survey closes today for the initial high-level sort of category feedback. But as you'll hear more about, there's, there's going to be a lot more opportunity for people to weigh in. And the other thing we wanted to highlight is that we've been really grateful to work with the Lynn Public Schools for, for help with getting the word out about the ARPA survey and about what's going on with ARPA. And, and hopefully, many of you will be able to join us next week for Student Government Day, where we will also be working on ARPA with student, student leaders. So it's, education in the Lynn Public Schools are certainly featuring prominently in our, in our approach to this. And so we wanted to share an update with the school committee. So I'll turn it over to Capital Strategic Solutions.
Thanks. You start. So thank you so much for having us. My name is Jennifer Thompson, and I'm joined with Nicole Figurito. We're with Capital Strategic Solutions. And as the mayor mentioned, we're helping the city with a number of things related to ARPA, but most recently, a really robust outreach program to try to get input from residents and businesses in the city of Lynn on how they believe the ARPA money should be spent and what the funding priorities should be. We do have a quick presentation. I will go over just a little bit what ARPA is. And I think most of you have already heard that and know that already. But just for folks in the audience or at home, we'll just go through it pretty quickly. And then Nicole will talk more about the recent outreach that we've been doing. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in 2021 by the federal government, and it was intended to provide support to cities and towns in terms of mitigating COVID-19 and as well as the impacts of COVID-19. As you probably are aware, the city of Lynn is eligible to receive just over $75 million in the direct ARPA allocation. And that's in addition to some of the state and federal funds that the city of Lynn has or will receive through other ARPA avenues, as well as some of the ESTA funding that I'm sure you're all familiar with. So the city, right out of the gate, allocated $17 million from your ARPA allocation for HVAC improvements to your public schools and some of your municipal buildings. I think the, the city recognized early on that this was a dire deed to make, to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and work on those HVAC programs. So that was the very first thing that the city did in terms of the ARPA funds. The city also, the city council made a decision with the mayor's office to allocate some funding through the EDIC to support your local Lynn businesses that were hit the hardest by the pandemic. So that was another one of the very first projects that were funded through ARPA and is currently underway. So that leaves about $58 million that the city of Lynn will still have to spend on ARPA funds. And that's what we've been, especially Nicole, traveling the city, talking about and getting input from residents and businesses on how they feel that money should be spent. Cities and towns have until 2026 to spend the funds, and they, but it has to be in a contract by 2024. So there are four general uses that the city of Lynn can use the ARPA money for. You can use it to fight the pandemic and the public health impacts of the pandemic, as well as the economic impacts of it. You can use it for assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted industries that were hit the hardest during the pandemic. The second category is the legislation allows you to pay premium pay to essential workers that worked in person during the, during the pandemic. The third category, I'm sure you're aware that the pandemic caused a drop in local revenue for cities and towns. So the third section of the legislation allows the city of Lynn to use lost revenue to fund general government services. So what does that mean? That means the city of Lynn can use the lost revenue that you experienced due to the pandemic to fund some of the things that you would normally fund in a city budget. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and give some examples. And then the final thing is the city of Lynn can use the funds for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure improvements. So that's a lot of things that you can spend it on. And the legislation is very specific on what cities and towns cannot spend the funding on. And there are five things that are spelled out in the legislation. So cities and towns cannot use it to put money into pension funds. They can't use it to pay off any of your debt on your existing capital debt projects. You can't use it to pay any legal settlements or judgment agreements. The city cannot use it to put money into a stabilization fund or a rainy day fund. And finally, the city cannot use the funds to match another federal grant. You can use it to match a state grant. You just cannot use it to match another federal grant. So some examples of that first category, that public health and economic impact project, which I think, you know, most of these are obvious in the beginning. Vaccination efforts, monitoring for COVID-19, contact tracing. Hopefully, we're beyond that, let's hope. And protective equipment for your employees. You can use it to support vulnerable populations to help them access medical and public health services. You can use it, again, to, just like the CARES Act funding and CARES Act funding and some of your ESTA funding, you can use it in your public buildings to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. City can use it for payroll and benefits for public safety and public health staff as long as they are responding to the pandemic. Again, improvements to public health and assistance to populations that have demonstrated a hardship due to the pandemic. So I talked a little bit about that drop in revenue that cities and towns experienced and things that you can fund through general government and general government services, things you would normally fund from a city budget. And those are things like building of infrastructure, roadwork, building of schools and municipal facilities, technology, cybersecurity, again, health services, any sort of environmental remediation, school and educational services, police, fire, public safety, and again, any other traditional government service, as long as it's not any of those five exclusions that we talked about. So as we've gone around to the various wards and had a lot of meetings with community groups, we've talked just in terms of high-level categories. And these are just, this is just a high-level, not an exhaustive list, but these are just some of the things that have come out, come up through the meetings and been discussed citywide. Again, public health support and some of the public health measures that you've already taken by, through the HVAC improvements, mental health and substance abuse, those small business grants that you are awarding through your EDIC, mitigation for businesses in terms of their infrastructure, mortgage rental, utility relief for the folks that, for residents in the city of Lynn. Digital equity for all. I'm sure, you know, no one saw this more than the students and the teachers that lived through the pandemic and how difficult it was for students to have access to Wi-Fi. So ARPA funding does allow you to improve your broadband and public Wi-Fi in the city. Again, water, sewer, roadwork, sidewalks. Parks and recreation is something we've heard a lot about over the last few weeks. Upgrading and improving your existing parks, pocket parks, improving your green space. And last but not least, school construction. So anything that would complement those HVAC replacements and updates to your school buildings. Again, there are some limitations under that general government category because it does have to match up with the revenue loss. And I'm just going to turn it over to Nicole so she can talk a little bit about what she's been doing the last few weeks.
So I have been traveling around your city and fallen in love with Lynn. I honestly, there's such a great vibe going through your community right now. I mean, you can feel the energy. It's like something's brewing. And we've been talking a lot about how to stay connected through the ARPA project, process. So we've developed LynnARPA.com where you can sign up and get email notifications. We recommend that you follow Mayor Nicholson on social media, on his Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter account, and also follow the city of Lynn on social media as well. So right now, we're in the winter-spring engagement process, and we're educating, engaging, and gathering feedback. The survey's closed tonight, and then we'll launch at the same time the request for ARPA projects as well as the ARPA project scoring matrix. So when we put those projects, requests out there, you'll see how they're going to be scored. It's a very transparent process that's important to the administration and the city council, as well as the federal government for everything to be as transparent as possible. Then we'll launch the project selection surveys after we've developed that extensive list of projects that, you know, we're going to have. In the summer, we'll implement the ARPA matrix to assist with the project selection and present the selected projects to the city council for presentation. Our timeline, so today's the last day for the surveys. In early April, we'll present those survey results to the city council and let them know of our findings from the conversations we've been having throughout your communities, as well as the survey data. We've gotten a really lot of great ideas and great feedback at those meetings. And I highly encourage people to continue to share that right up until midnight tonight, as many as possible. So we'll launch the project request in mid-April. Then we'll launch the project selection surveys in May. We'll present the projects to the city council in July of 2022. And then lastly, it's the project implementation in the late summer or early fall pending procurement. And then lastly, it's the project implementation in the late summer or early fall pending procurement. So again, I'm plugging the survey. It's in multiple languages. I think people are sick of hearing me say this, but you know, this, these are important dollars. These are important decisions for your community. This is the start of, you know, all of that blossoming change that's going on. And the buzz is really positive out there about ARPA, about the administration. I mean, I've, I've never seen a power behind a community like I've seen here. We're doing it in 18 other communities, so it's very strong. The outreach has been fantastic. So we'll be posting additional information on the ARPA website, including the projects that are up for selection. It's a very transparent process. And that's all I do have right now.
I'm just going to add one quick thing. So, you know, I think, I just want to echo what the mayor said. It's difficult sometimes to get folks to fill out surveys. Everyone's busy. It's also difficult to get people to come to meetings at night, especially when you're working two or three jobs and you have kids. So, you know, we just want to thank the superintendent and the administration for helping to get the surveys out to the families. That was really helpful, so thanks.
Member Castellanos, member Pena.
Thank you again. I saw you last night for Ward Five and Six presentation. I want to say it's always, I always take away more every time I see this presentation, I swear. Actually, yesterday I went back and after I posted on social media, I had some constituents reach out because I had shared, you know, some of my experiences, like some of like, the priorities, right? And it was actually, I had a constituent voice a interesting point about inclusionary park spaces within schoolyards. And it went into a lot of research that they've done with their own children. And that's something that wasn't, we didn't talk about yesterday. I also, there was a lot of people there I didn't want to take to air, but I think that's one, actually, when we look at parks and recreation, I think that's something that is very important. I know we've, we've had, I believe it was parenting, parenting, we had an inclusionary park. We had, I remember the artwork, everything that got put into it. And I would like to see, you know, that's, that's something that I wanted to make public. And I told my constituent I would bring that up tonight. So as I said, encourage your constituents to ask these questions, and you're here to speak up on their behalf. And today is my birthday.
Happy birthday.
And for my birthday, I'm asking people out there, could you please take the survey? Not until midnight to take the survey. Quick plug, wonderful work being done by the mayor's office and everyone involved, from the council to the city of Lynn, to you guys getting out there. You're in the community, you're discussing with, I think, over 500 community groups. What was the number you put?
So we, we've emailed and contacted over 500 community groups, but we've been, for the last two weeks, we've just been traveling around and we've been walking your wards and talking to people and having extensive conversations. And I, I can't say enough of how warm and welcoming every ward has been to the conversations and the business owners walking in there, and they're just so happy that somebody's, you know, we're talking to them. And it's just a wonderful thing to have an administration that is doing this outreach. You know, we've, we've been in a lot of communities and we can tell when it's, they're doing it because it's a process. Your administration, all of you included, are doing this because you want to see your community members add their feedback in, because a project, these projects and processes won't be successful unless you have buy-in. And you just have an amazing administration, city council, and all of you on the school committee. I'm just, I'm blown away by Lynn. Like, I'm never leaving. People are stuck with me. I really am.
I had one more, just, just a follow-up about sustainability. I know I mentioned this last night at our community meeting about ARPA. With every project, I know as Mayor Nicholson mentioned last night, everyone, you know, not all of these projects will get to that full, you know, final stage, but it's important to also recognize sustainability and that these funds are here. These are very important, you know, initiatives and priorities and projects, but just to be mindful of sustainability. Because we want to be able to have projects follow through and last. And, you know, it's important to, you know, to think about that in, in high-level thinking. And that's why we do the outreach. And it's good to get that, as we gather everyone's input. I appreciate the inclusive language access, the way you guys are rolling it out. It's, it's really robust, and it's definitely something that I appreciate. And I did mention just last night about vocational, adult vocational opportunities. And I think that's something for me, when you look at the, the career paths and I think seeking alternative pathways, because not everyone's going to college. And we have Lynn Tech there, right, right here at home. And I think that's important to tap into those opportunities and maybe enhance those opportunities for vocational learners and to make a priority around, you know, how we tap into the students who don't go to Lynn Tech. We've got Fecto Larry, Lane English, Lane Classical. We've got students who, you know, might not know what they want to do right out of high school and might want to enter into a trade. And I think those opportunities could be born out of Lynn Tech, and I think we could really expand on that. But that's just, you know, this is a wish list, you know, we're trying to figure this out. So I wanted to publicly state that and just share it with the public. It's my job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, member Pena.
Thank you for the presentation. And I can say I engage with a lot of the Latino community, and they're all engaged, you know, everyone's feeling good about this, and a lot of them filling out the survey.
Great.
And a lot of the businesses are getting involved, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate that, me being a, you know, Latino and someone from Lynn, you know, my whole life, I really appreciate that. I want to echo what Brian was talking about, you know, adult, you know, educational and vocational training. That's something that I like to see, you know, we can probably tap into that and try to expand to that. Also, we had a couple of debates at the high schools, you know, and I went to the Lane English auditorium. And maybe, you know, updating auditoriums, you know. I sat in those, in the auditorium back in the days, and it was tight then, and it's tight now. That's something that we can look into, maybe so we can get more participation for it, you know, with the community and engaging in auditoriums with our kids and our community.
Great idea. Amazing suggestions.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have some? I'm greedy, I like whatever I can get, especially when it's on a public record, you know.
I'm going to repeat what I said when I went to Ward Four. No, people were asking about our community centers. And I brought up that after a certain time, most of our schools are empty. And if they have a gym, you know, or a cafeteria, there's no reason why we can't use those as community centers. And we had one at the Ford School. And the night that I was there, a lady got up and she talked about how she had come new to America and didn't speak any English, and that it was the Ford School, that's where her kids went. And she was able to learn English there and a lot of other skills she was telling me afterwards. So I think it's something, it's a resource that we have that we haven't totally utilized. And a lot of people would, I think, use that.
Great idea.
Thank you very much. I just want to put this out there, if we're saying things on the public record, as the co-leader of a Girl Scout troop that often has a difficult time finding space and understanding that when the new YMCA was built, that those community rooms are literally booked solid. I know because Lenny has to sometimes pull strings to get the Girl Scout troop in. That, that being creative about how we use community spaces and thinking about re-tasking money in various ways to open up community spaces. I think our branch library's closing, that happened right when I moved to Lynn in 2004. The one that was really close to my house closed the year, and now it's a, an insurance agency. And so when we lose those community spaces, it's really hard to get them back again. And so thinking creatively about how to create community spaces, because you want your Girl Scouts, you want your Boy Scouts. Yes, we can find churches, but it would be lovely if it was public space. And I think that that, if you think about the kind of community feel that each of our schools engenders, especially if folks were able to use those in ways that were not just directly connected with education, I, I would guess that our PTOs would grow as a result. I would guess that our absenteeism would go down as a result of people engaging with the building itself. So I can see a lot of community benefits to what member Capola is talking about, that far outstretched just the, wouldn't it be nice if my Girl Scouts could meet at a school kind of argument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, member Dugan.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Again, I guess since we're getting on public record. I feel like I need to say something. No, I, you know, I think there's a lot to be said for pride in our schools. And when you talk to your students and you talk to the teachers, and I was at the Ward One and Two meeting, I promise, litter is a problem, I promise I won't. But, you know, building that pride in our schools and investing in the kids, and I think a big part of it is the athletic fields. I know we have Manning Field and we have Frazier. But the kids, you know, they, they need that sense of, of community in the parks. So I think just updating the parks and finding ways that we can, you know, maintain those updates, whether it be, I know there's been talk of turf fields and things of that nature, but whatever it might be, I think those things are very, very important. And just investing in our kids so that they understand that we're doing this so that you then can, you know, when it's your turn, you guys do the same thing. So again, just so we're on public record, I think the parks and, just updating those are really, really important.
Thank you.
And, member Gailey.
Well, it's funny, because Mr. Dugan and I, after our meeting for Ward One and Two, this woman came up to us and was talking to us about the community school, the Ford School, where she learned to, learn how to speak English. And I can't agree more with Tiffany, I mean, Dr. Magnolia and the other committee members about community space, whether we use them in our schools because they are available. I also, like, talked to the city councillor Hogan about turf fields, and I think about Kene, maybe getting it, getting it done over, and classical. And at our meeting, the number one thing was about the trash. It really was. And coincidentally, one of the students that were, was in attendance, he's in the eighth grade, and he was doing a civics, civics project on trash. So I appreciate you coming around and the ARPA funds, and I can't wait to see what unfolds because of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm on the record.
Anyone else?
I forgot to mention about mental health and substance abuse. Yes, it's a big thing. There was a, someone had donated a building on Spring Street, and they called it the No Matter What Club, and they had meetings there 24 hours a day. And unfortunately, they sold the building. It'd be nice to have something like that to deal with trauma and substance abuse that the city can own, that, that can invite people at all, you know, all the time, because we do have a big problem in our city, and somewhere, it's big all around.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's, especially, you know, coming out from COVID, mental health is big, and, you know, substance abuse is something that we really need to focus and, and with our kids, our students and our community.
That's another great suggestion. I think the pandemic exposed people who were on the borderline, you know, whether it was a substance or a mental health issue. So I think like a lot of the suggestions that you're all making here tonight are great suggestions, and we look forward to seeing your project submissions as well. So we're not done yet. So that's why I said you're going to see me a lot.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
I just want to give an opportunity for our student from Fecto Larry, maybe, do you have any insight, perspective about how you would like, see, we said $58 million. That's what's on the table. That's a lot of money, so what do you think?
That's your big wish.
I think the money would go well...
Yeah, no right, there's no right or wrong, hey.
Yeah. If you had a wish list, what would you do? For your community, for you, what would you do?
I like how you guys were talking about fixing the parks and the fields. I think that's really nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? You know, one of the questions that, that I had asked initially, and I think it'd be helpful to kind of run through, is obviously one of the big needs that we have as a district is new schools. And, you know, as we looked into this, I think there's some sort of challenges from the timing perspective, given the way the ARPA funds unfold. So, so why don't I just share that, and then if people have other questions, we can chime in. But the funds have to be contracted by 2024 and then spent by 2026. We, you know, we're obviously going through the pickering process, and, and we have some good community members here, and we've been keeping everybody posted about how that's going. We're in the early stages, so early that it's, you know, it's a matter of years before this building comes online. And, and it's also a matter of years before the money starts being spent even. So we also have been working closely with the, you know, the school department, the city's financial team, to make sure that we have enough money for the pickering project, and that's sort of on track. I think what that means is that if you were thinking about using ARPA funds, if one was thinking about using ARPA funds for new school construction beyond the pickering, it's not going to fall in the timeline of the ARPA funds. And, you know, I just thought it was worth sort of sharing that because that was one of the first questions I had about how that would all fit together. So, yeah. Member Magnolia.
Interestingly, though, we could use ARPA funds to, say, put solar arrays on a number of schools to defray electricity costs. So, you know, in, in thinking about this concept of sustainability with the ARPA funds, I think it's in our best interest to think very long-term in terms of what would get us the most return on investment. And one of the things that I can say, you know, as a member of North Shore Community College, is that when we put the solar array on our Lynn campus building, and then when we built a new building in our Danvers campus that was net zero, those, those projects paid dividends. So to use money that you wouldn't have otherwise to bring down electricity costs by hundreds of thousands of dollars every month would perhaps be a really wise investment if we're thinking about our school's infrastructure. The same thing is also true, I know we worked on HVAC, but it would also be true if we look at a lot of our older buildings that are likely not going to be replaced soon with energy efficiency, you know, materials. So whatever version of that, I think, is in our ARPA funding would be in our best interest.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great point, and certainly those projects would be eligible. And I think the next step here is for us to start collecting suggestions for specific projects, and those could be one of them. And at the same time, we're going to be releasing the rubric by which the decisions are going to be made. And obviously, you know, it has to comply with these rules that we're talking about. It has to meet the timeline. And then another big one will be, is this, is this really a one-time cost because, for that sustainability point? This is, this is one shot, and it's, it's a great shot, it's, it's an exciting opportunity, but we need to be making the investments in, in things we're either going to continue, able to continue paying for, or, or that it's just a one-time improvement. So, so building improvements are a great, you know, one of those kinds of projects that, that, that does well on that, on that rubric. Member Castellanos, member Capola.
Since we're on public record, so yesterday during Ward Five and Six, I did share Dr. Magnolia's insights about solar energy and just sustainable projects within the city. This includes wind turbines, there's so many other, once you start looking at the green communities around us and folks that are investing in solar energy and capital projects, there's so many learning examples around us, around the country. So I think I do share that, that value as well, especially if, you know, we're looking, again, at that one-time cost, you know, those type of projects could pay us back and would allow us to, you know, develop additional resources and just opportunities down the road and to look at residual impact. And I think that's what I'm hoping to accomplish. I look forward to just going through this process and to just seeing the follow-through and, and just as a learner, just seeing the growth and, like, like, I mentioned this earlier about the district-wide strategic plan years ago that was put together, to see things followed through on, it's, it's amazing, to see the vision, to see where we're at. And first of all, to see the, where we started in a pandemic to where we are, where we are now is just, it's, I feel like I'm in the twilight. It's unbelievable. But no, but it's definitely, this is real, and I, I feel like there needs, you know, we got to get this out there, even if folks don't make it for my birthday survey request. You know, I think we got to get people... You know, I think we got to get people, just get people involved, get people excited. I think State Rep. Cabano said, this is awesome. We got money, like, we got opportunities. Like, you should be very excited. Get your, you know, I haven't seen so many, like, leaders, like, request, like, I go at my constituents like a sales rep, I need to know how you feel, like, I don't care what time it is. It's important because eventually, you know, like Mayor Nicholson just pointed out, like, it's going to get rolled out. And it's important to have input, to get the equitable input too, around the whole city together. I believe that was the slogan when he ran, together all together. So I think it's important. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, member Capola.
Yeah, actually, the wind turbine was brought up 18 years ago, and we had no money. And I'll give a shout out to Loretta Cuff O'Donnell. She sat here 18 years ago and she brought it up. And then she ran and became a city councilor, and she worked with the water and sewer department. So we have one down on the Linway, that wind turbine. But it would be great to to take care of all of our school or all municipal buildings here in the community.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for joining us. Thanks, everyone, for the input. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Deb, can I trouble you for that computer? Thanks, nevermind. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so the next item was the graduation dropout update. Dr. Tuttwiler.
Yeah, we, you received in your packet the full presentation, which, if you recall, our March 3 meeting, I referenced the, some of the data that we were prepared to present to you tonight. We're excited about it. I recommended to Mayor Nicholson that we, there's no urgency in presenting that data. We are excited about it. And quite frankly, we want it to have a stage by itself. So I wanted to recommend that we move that to our next meeting.
Motion to table and move to the next meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please. Member Castellanos? Yes. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan? Yes. Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson? Yes. All right, next item is discussion on redistricting Lynn Woods and Shoemaker Streets, which was previously tabled.
So if you'll recall, at our March 3 meeting, we had the principals of Lynn Woods and Shoemaker Schools here. We presented to you the rationale for a shift in the, a certain set of streets currently assigned to Lynn Woods to shift to Shoemaker. The rationale would be to add some reprieve to Lynn Woods around their class sizes in future years, and then also create a better sense of balance between students with disabilities and those in regular education at Shoemaker. The committee's request was to engage in a couple of activities before a decision was made. Immediately after the meeting, both principals sent an email to the families that they serve in both of those schools explaining the rationale for the proposal. They also offered a Zoom where parents, families could drop in, ask questions, give feedback. There were no attendees at that Zoom. And then we also, through the election office, were able to procure the addresses for all of the streets that we talked about that were involved in this decision. We sent a letter explaining what the shift was, that no current students or families would be impacted, and no siblings, if you can add sibling, a student currently attending, either one of the schools would be impacted. Informed them that would be discussed tonight, gave them my email address and my phone number to call with questions. No one did. So we feel pretty confident now that there is awareness of this proposal. And dare I say, by, you know, the fact that no one reached out to say, I have a problem, acceptance of it. And so I'd like to circle back and ask for the committee's support.
Dr. Magnolia.
I'd like to move that we accept the redistricting proposal that was presented to us at the last meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please. Member Castellanos? Yes. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan? Yes. Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson? Yes. Thank you. Field trip requests. Dr. Tuttwiler.
Yep, there are two. The first is to take a group of students from all of the high schools who are engaged in the Trio Program on a college visit to the University of New Hampshire, which is out of state, which requires school committee support. So asking for your support and approval of that field trip.
Make a motion that we allow the students at all the high schools, it doesn't say specifically, but at all high schools, to the University of New Hampshire on May 5, 2022.
Second.
Roll call. Member Castellanos? Yes. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan? Yes. Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson? Yes.
And then the second request, our Lynn MC JROTC program has done us proud again at the Northeast Competition. I forwarded you the outcome of that competition. First place overall and first place in nearly every competition, except for one where they got second place. Their performance has earned them an opportunity to participate in the National Drill Championship in Daytona Beach, Florida, April 13 to 16. Would love to send our students down there again to represent us as they've done so admirably in in recent years.
Make a motion to allow Lynn English Marine Corps Junior ROTC 2022 National High School Drill Team Championship, April 13 to April 16, 2022, in Daytona Beach, Florida. Nice time of the year.
Roll call, please. Member Castellanos? Yes. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan? Yes. Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson? Yes.
And I also just want to name, there was recently an awesome field trip that a group of classical students were able to participate in down the Cape. This is a science-focused field trip. Was an overnight field trip. By our sort of quick review of records and minutes, for the past 14 years, in-state overnight field trips have not come for school committee approval, but they really should. So they will going forward. Just wanted to name that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Next item is the update on the Student Opportunity Act.
That's me. So at our February 10 meeting, we discussed the, an opportunity to revisit the Student Opportunity Act, which I'll call SOA going forward, the plan that we developed related to the Student Opportunity Act. Just a quick reminder, the SOA revised the Chapter 70 funding to address inequities on how funds are allocated to districts. This year is the first year of that Student Opportunity Act plan and that shift to the formula. We've experienced a lot over the past two years. And accordingly, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommended, not required, that districts revisit the priorities identified in their original SOA plan. While it's not required, any opportunity to gather feedback is a good one, in our view. We sent a survey outlining the priorities and asked families if they believed, and staff, if they believed these still to be the ones on which we should focus. Families were also offered an opportunity to share an additional area of focus in the narrative response field. A follow-up virtual town hall was held on March 14. In your packets is a memo from me outlining the outcomes of that feedback and a recommendation. In overwhelming fashion, families indicated that the priorities identified in our first Student Opportunity Act plan are indeed the things on which we should continue to focus. The narrative analysis, and there was a lot of narrative feedback, in many ways confirmed that the six priorities that were identified should still be the sixth. But there were three additional areas of focus that came up through the narrative feedback. One is the quality and variety of meals provided, particularly at the elementary level. Another is providing more enrichment and arts activities during the school day and after school. And a third is increasing supports and compensation for Lynn Public School staff. It's our intention to honor the additional areas of emphasis identified in the survey. While the participation was low this survey, all three additional areas of emphasis that I just named, that came out of the survey, the recent survey, were also identified as areas of emphasis in the stakeholder input effort for our SOR III funding. It should be noted that meals cannot be included in the SOA plan, and they are not a viable expenditure for SOR III funding. Nonetheless, we're continuing to explore more robust feedback opportunities and varied options for students. As noted in the memo, it's my recommendation, batteries running low, it is my recommendation that we continue to implement the original SOA plan for the following reasons. One is the strong support for the existing priorities based on the most recent stakeholder input effort. Two, alignment of the priorities with the, in the original SOA plan with our strategic plan, which is also built on stakeholder input. Alignment between, three, alignment between the priorities identified through the original Student Opportunity Act stakeholder input process and that between SOR III funding in the fall of 2021. And then finally, the fact that the district has partially, only partially implemented the original SOA plan. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Castellanos.
First of all, thank you for your report. Very thorough, as always. And it's always, to see where we are with this, I don't know, tonight's a deep reflection night, I think, for me. I just feel like this is just, to see where we are with with this is incredible. It's inspiring. I want to thank everybody that's been a part of this. To see the input, the outreach that was put into this was, it's visible. I see, you know, what was done. And it was a very delicate, robust process that we went through. And I just thank you for that. And I had, you know, anytime I have had constituents ask questions, you've been, your team, everyone's been very helpful. And and breaking it down, because this is complex. This is not easy to really process if you're not familiar with this. And it's been awesome to see that be able to dive deep and to teach it another way, to get people excited about this. This is another piece of legislation and just, this is going to lead to so many positive outcomes. And it's good for our students, good for this district, good for Lynn. So I just say thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So what's the will of the committee?
So move that we accept the report from the superintendent to go forth with that.
A second.
Roll call, please. Member Castellanos? Yes. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan? Yes. Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson? Yes. Next, we have discussion on high school schedules. Member Gaetley.
I had to bring up the schedule for the high schools this year because there were a lot of concerns by high school teachers when I went to English or I went to classical, not so much at tech. But then, then in the survey, there were several comments about the schedule. Primarily, I, most of the teachers were like, that two-hour block is just too long to have students. I've said chunking, do you chunk? You know, because that's a strategy we use when you have multiple, a long period of time, and you want to engage your students. And they say, we chunk, we do everything. And it really is a struggle, that last half hour. So I don't know if we can change it. I know the schedule came out last year. To change it, an ideas. I just happened to get an email, because this was on the agenda, from a teacher at Lynn English, Jeff Bigler, and he had sent me a proposed schedule. And he said, you're aware of the schedule? And I put one in everybody's, I put it, and it was late. I got it today, so it was late. And I just, I just want to know if we could change it. I like the idea that he has with five lunches. It's because the lunchroom cafeteria is really, really crowded during lunch. And I know that we need this or something like this so we can have the early college. So I understand where you are, Dr. Tuttwiler, and Dem, Ms. Regero, but I also understand the other side, where the cafeteria is so crowded, where the two-hour teaching is a long time to communicate with freshmen or sophomores that are ELs. So I think we need to revisit it. And if you would like to talk to Mr. Bigler, he could come up and explain this, if you want him to. I didn't put it on the agenda, so he's here. I wasn't expecting it. I just wanted to have a discussion about this. So how does, has anyone else on the committee found anything or heard anything about scheduled problems in the high school?
Member Castellanos.
Well, I have, I've had students speak up about schedule concerns. But I wouldn't mind it here, if you would like to share perspective.
I want to be respectful of the hour. This is a long meeting already, and I don't want to make it too much longer. But I'd be happy to explain. I also brought my computer. I could put it on the smartboard if you want me to. I could also just talk.
I don't even know if it's supposed to do it.
I think, I think we probably should check if we want to get off the agenda too far. Yeah.
That's fine. I'm also happy to come back to another meeting. If that would be better, and I could do an actual presentation of at least my idea at some future meeting.
I think Dr. Tuttwiler was going to.
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment. I mean, I, I have seen the schedule. And it was presented in detailed fashion by Mr. Bigler in a meeting that we had probably December, I want to say.
December, January, it was a bunch of, like, union members and teachers from the high schools and you. And I think Regero was there.
Regero was there, it was Gardner.
Yeah.
And the idea was to hear, first and foremost, from teachers who were willing to, you know, give feedback on their experience with the schedule. And I'd say there were, you know, no more than 30, but probably around, you know, 25 folks there. And Mr. Bigler did a really nice job explaining this, this schedule. So I am familiar with this, and I have tremendous respect for Mr. Bigler and the work that he does at English. What I would say, just briefly, is before I became Deputy Superintendent, my entire career was spent in high school. Teacher, assistant principal, dean, principal. And in the four high schools that I worked, there was a different schedule in every one of them. And in one of the high schools, we actually went through, actually two of them, we went through a transition to different schedules. And my, my statement on schedules is that there's no such thing as a perfect one, right? And because there's no such thing as a perfect one, what's most important is that whoever, the school leadership, the community, decides what is important. And make sure that that is happening in that schedule with the understanding that there are going to be other things in that experience that aren't so great. And so my understanding, I mean, there were, this schedule that we have now was voted on last year. It's only in English and classical. It was voted on by the staff. It's in place. in English and classical. It was voted on by the staff. It's in place. We've gotten some anecdotal feedback. We've not surveyed the staff yet. We will. There have been some student surveys that have gone out, and I'm happy to bring that data back. It is a little rosier than some of the staff feedback that we've gotten, but I'm happy to bring that back in more robust fashion. My only worry with making a major shift to a brand-new schedule next year, actually, not only, I just have a couple of worries, and I expressed this when we met. A few worries, and it might be four. One is, this year is unlike any other, right? So the context matters, right? So there, to start a new schedule this year probably wasn't the best thing, you know, for the high school teachers, because on top of all of the other challenges that we were experiencing this year, they also had to contend with, really trying to, you know, figure out how to instruct in a model that they haven't experienced before. And so that's going to impact people's feelings about it. And, you know, I wouldn't take, I would never marginalize how people feel about and are experiencing their workday. But the context does matter, and we need to pay attention to that. The other thing that I would note is that, you know, major shifts year-to-year with schedule, I don't think are a good idea. Sometimes you have to, I went, when I was a teacher, from a 55-minute block to a 90-minute block, and everybody hated it the first year, but learned to love it afterward. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen here, but I would worry about making a major shift, having only experienced, at this point, three quarters of a year away from something that we spent two years to develop. The other thing I would say is, what's wrapped up in the schedule are things that, remember when Ms. Mower and Ms. Dunn came and presented it, Shannon Gardner came and presented before the pandemic around why we were going through this process. There are programs that are wrapped up into this schedule, and partners that are wrapped up into the schedule, and everything is connected, right? And so, you know, for example, you know, we have a partnership with North Shore Community College, partnership with Salem State, and there are aspects of the existing schedule that are tied to professor schedules, that if we said, ah, we're not going to do that anymore, I don't know that all the other entities would be able to change as well. We also have the After Dark program, which provides those additional opportunities for kids from every other high school but Lynn Tech to have that shop experience. And so what I will say about what's, what's proposed, it's, it's good. I will say that, it is good. And I've heard some feedback directly from folks in both schools to say, like, this, this actually could accommodate a lot of the things that we think are important. But I think, you know, we need to honor the fact that we had a process to get to where we are now, and if we're going to change, I think we need to have a similar process, rather than changing quickly. That was probably seven things.
That's why I put it on as a conversation.
The biggest thing that I hear is, is the two-hour, the 120 minutes. You know, like you said yourself, you, people got used to 90 minutes, and maybe not in 90 minutes. I think, I think Ms. Gaitley said that, that people felt like that extra 30 minutes, they lost them. You know, can it, is there a possibility to be tweaked just on that?
Um...
I can't, you know, this is like foreign to me, so I, I can't decipher it, but, you know, I don't know how many 90-minute classes there are.
Well, the two-hour block, if you change it, then something has to go in its place, and that impacts the master schedule as, as a whole. And so, can it be? I mean, I honestly don't know. I'd have to go back to the folks who have the strongest handle on the scheduling scenario at the, the high schools to see. Like, if you just shortened it, what would that mean? Excuse me. But while I would say, and embrace the feedback around how teachers are experiencing that two hours, I would say there's also some narrative feedback from students that is different, who like it. There are some who don't, don't get me wrong. But there, you know, I just want to make sure that if we're, if we are going to make a change, that we've done a robust stakeholder input process, that we've thought about, and once again, recommitted to what we think is important, and that whatever we go to, you know, reflects that belief, or reflects those beliefs.
The other part of the question, I was going to say, I, I remember when this was brought to us, we, there was a space issue. I mean, the number of kids that we have in those two schools could not accommodate regular schedule, scheduling. We didn't have enough rooms, and so wasn't that part of the reason that we had to accommodate and try to work other things out, which is where we went with the North Shore Community College and other alternative things?
Yeah, I, it does create, you know, an opportunity for more off-campus experiences, so yes. But we're not all the way there yet. And I wouldn't say that that exclusively was the reason for that shift.
Great. Well, thank you for the discussion. The next item on the agenda is feminine hygiene products in the secondary schools.
Yep, that's me. Computer died, so I'm going to look at my notes on my phone here. I'm not messaging. So for those who were on back in the fall of 2019, you'd recall that we had a pretty robust conversation about the potential for installing feminine hygiene product dispensers in the bathrooms across our Middleland High Schools. And at the time, I think there was also a discussion at the state level. Matter of fact, there might have been a bill already submitted. Pandemic happened, and conversations focused on what we needed to do, and I think that's happened at the State House as well. But, you know, in conversation with our nursing department and understanding needs in the community, we would like to proceed with this. We, for those who were here back in the fall of 2019, I think the only objection was that it might interrupt relationships between nurses and students, because students now go to the nurse's office to get a feminine hygiene product. But I think I learned and grew, and now understand why that's not viable for every student, and would like the committee's support for us to proceed with this. In your packets, there was also a breakdown of costs. It's roughly a little more than $20,000 a year, which is fine. The company that gave us that quote, the city already has a partnership with, they've done the library, and I believe City Hall, and the feedback is good about their service. So they would both install the dispensers and resupply them on a monthly basis. There are still some logistics that we want to work out around disposal without, you know, we have some thoughts on that. So we want to iron that piece out before we begin, but I'd be grateful for the committee's support on this.
Member Castellanos.
So I, I, back in 2019, I remember meeting with the people from Citron, Citron? How you say it? Citron? I remember, like, talking to those folks, and as we were, I heard, you know, we're pretty much, I'll make a motion to, to support and approve us to move forward on this, to implement in the feminine, feminine hygiene product, which is right in front of us. So I make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Great.
Oh, wait. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Next item is vote to cancel April 14th, May 12th, and May 26th meetings. April 14th is only Thursday. May 12th and May 26th, there are conflicts with community events. I think we were talking, you know, obviously, this is a busy time of year with the budget, and so maybe wondering if we could just cancel the 14th and the 12th and leave the 26th because of those issues. But, you know, what's the, what's the will of the committee? Member Capola?
I think the April 14th, I'd like to make a motion that we hold that meeting on April 7th. Second.
Can we just look at our calendars here?
Yeah.
That's next.
Oh, it's the 6th.
That's next Thursday?
Yes. 7th, it's next week, yeah. But I mean, we've tabled things, and there's still a lot coming up.
So I can't, I won't be able to be there on the 7th. We, I could do the...
21st is school vacation week. We don't do it then.
I could do the...
Well, going a whole month at this time of the year is not reasonable, so to eliminate April 14th, 12th, and the 26th.
The 14th is because of the religious holiday, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. So, you know, we can't do it early next week because of the posting.
Do Monday, do...
Monday, the 11th. I could do Friday, the 8th.
Can't do Friday.
Yeah, okay.
Monday, the 11th?
I can't do Monday, 11th. Tuesday, we have council.
18th is a holiday.
Patriot's Day.
I use that.
But it's school vacation.
Double.
That's school vacation week, though.
School vacation week.
So we don't hold the meetings on vacation weeks.
Okay. I mean, I have a, I could do the 7th. We do it late in the evening, like, starting at 7:30.
Okay.
Fine.
I just need to get childcare, or Henry's coming.
Would love to have Henry.
That works.
I'll come in on the Saturday.
We do, do the retreats on the Saturdays.
7:30 on that day would be all right.
Yeah, on the 7th?
Yes.
Okay.
Could even do subcommittees at 7:30, so you have a little leeway.
So technically, Mayor, there's a motion and a second on the floor that is to move it to that date.
So is that, is that motion inclusive of the...
7:30 time, I think.
Of the 7:30 time, but also the May, the May 12th?
No, she just separated out the April 14th.
Okay. Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
What's the will of the committee for the 12th?
May I ask why we're canceling that one? Is that a religious holiday?
It is not. Uh, Mayor?
Yes, please, yeah. No, go ahead.
That I'm aware of, anyway. So I am on the board of the Northeast Arc, and that is their evening event. It's, they do a fashion show, and I participate with a Lynn student, so I would like to do that.
How about the 5th? Is, are people available on May 5th to...
No, sorry.
Okay. The following week, the 19th?
The 19th work for people?
About that, the following week.
I don't think I will be there.
So what are the suggestions? Because looking ahead, is May 26th is a cancel, too, so...
Wednesday. Well, I think we're not going to cancel the May 26th.
We're not canceling May 26th?
In terms of just budget prep, like, budget timeline, when do you, Kevin, any timeline projections for us to, what do you foresee that coming on our...
We're working on it internally. We're getting close. We need to, even the CFO, finalize our, hopefully, next week we'll have that, so we can pull them together. Soon as we get that, we have a couple, you know, P next Monday internally, we'll be very close after that. Soon as I get that done, I'm ready to ship it out to you, present it, based on these meetings, try to, first meeting, usually do an overview, then we start taking questions.
Yeah.
And the idea would be to approve it, set a public hearing when we come back, have the public hearing, first meeting in June, which will leave enough time through the month of May to answer every meeting. We would always put it on the agenda, that we kind of work through it, and then hopefully have a public hearing, get it approved, and move forward any hirings out of June to the budget process. We're going to do the 11th?
Yeah, so I said I could do the 11th, if people wanted to do that.
11th, May 11th instead of May 12th.
May 11th is a Wednesday, yeah.
I move, we move. I move, we move the May.
I can't do May 11th.
Oh, nevermind.
Sorry.
Sorry.
We move.
Every time. Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm looking at a lot of schedules.
Did we, I'm sorry, was the 19th shut down? Would that not work for people?
Yeah, I can't do the 19th.
Can't do the 19th, I'm sorry.
The 9th?
May 9th?
Yeah, I think I can do that.
Looks good.
You want to go with the 9th?
Yeah, just give me one second. Yes, yes, I could do the 9th.
Monday, the 9th.
I move, we move the 12th meeting to May 9th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll get an email out to confirm those dates, just so everybody has them, if you wouldn't mind. Mary? Yeah, thank you. Okay, any votes in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee?
Yes, we had a vote for the wells, hold on. We voted to put a well in Drewards parking lot, Drewards property. We voted for it, so and moved it to the, to the Committee of the Whole.
Great. So that's a recommendation from the Subcommittee?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Curriculum Subcommittee?
The Curriculum Subcommittee voted to recommend the synergize and study sync and actively learn as our ELA curriculum for 9th and 10th.
And that was sent to the full committee. Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Was it, was that the only vote? Yeah, right.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Personnel Subcommittee?
The only vote was a table.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to deliver the superintendent's report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yeah, um, in your packets, um, probably toward the back is, uh, this meeting Superintendent's report, uh, which is solely focused on, uh, the topic of an exit survey. Uh, in our last meeting, uh, there was an agenda item where we discussed, uh, the development of one, and I told you that, uh, at our next meeting, I would present to you a draft. Uh, we have that. Uh, I just wanna be clear, um, that, or reiterate what I shared the last meeting, that we, uh, spent time looking at the exit surveys from a number of other districts. Um, we pulled from the Mass Association of School Personnel Administrators, uh, a framework, actually the one we got from there was completely narrative data, which I think would drive down participant, uh, participation rates. Um, but that narrative data is important when people have an opportunity to write and share. Uh, and so what we've come up with is, uh, sort of a compilation of what we think the best of all of those, uh, examples, uh, is. Um, we are prepared, it is an online survey, we are prepared, uh, to, to launch it, particularly as we go into the spring months. Um, I wanna be clear that any departing member would receive, staff member would receive the survey, doesn't matter whether you're retiring, uh, moving out of state or, you know, leaving for another reason, we're gonna give it to all. We really want to understand, um, in a qualitative and quantitative, uh, way how people have experienced, uh, their work inland, uh, and we intend to use this as a mechanism for improvement. Also in the, uh, Superintendent's Report, um, I'm committing to presenting that data to the school committee at least once a year. We'll figure out what the right rhythm is for that, uh, so that you can also see what it is, uh, that's coming in. We have not launched this yet, so if you have any feedback on it, I would welcome it. You can see, either send that directly to me or, or to Mary. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, would entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
For, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to the administrator's associated, association contract. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.